Welcome, everybody. It is 5:48 PM. Today is Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. This meeting of the Board of Education is meeting over Zoom. I believe that the governor's stay-at-home order has just ended, but we have not yet been able to open up our buildings, especially since Nashua has the ordinance for six feet away and mask-wearing. We're still trying to figure out all those details. So until we get all that hammered out, we are going to continue to have our meetings via Zoom. Mr. Guarino, when you're ready, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Zim? Looks like she has not yet joined us.
Yes, Ms. Zim will be late this evening.
Okay. Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Julio?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Also, we have Ms. Denaris.
Here.
Mr. Gall?
Here.
Dr. McKinney?
Here.
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Ms. O'Gara?
Here.
Ms. Kinsella? Is here.
Here.
Ms. Gingras?
Here.
And Dr. Mosley will be joining us shortly, and also Ms. Zim will probably be joining us shortly. And I believe I got everybody.
All right, and we have a quorum.
Yes, we have a quorum.
The salient point. Okay, so good evening, everybody. This evening, I'm to understand that Ms. Gingras has a presentation for us on a plan for fall athletics. And so I'm really interested to hear what you've been working on, Ms. Gingras. And I know a lot of our students and student athletes and their families are also anxiously waiting to hear what you've got. Are you able to share your screen?
I am.
Okay, great.
We're all set.
I'll just go. Yeah, I'll get out of your way.
All right, let me share this and put it into presentation mode. Everybody can see that, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, thank you very much for taking time. I know your agendas have been pretty full lately with everything that's going on. And I know we have a lot of uncertainty surrounding what school's going to look like in the fall. So as equally uncertain is the future of middle school and high school athletic programs throughout the state. Obviously, as Ms. Raymond just mentioned, the stay-at-home order's been lifted since mid-May. Nashua and the state have really been opening up between outdoor dining, retail. There's been a lot of discussion about youth and amateur sports. And it's been great over the past week or so to drive by softball and baseball fields and to actually see kids out there. So that's been exciting. Even as much as two days ago, indoor dining even started. So each week, it seems like more and more is starting to open up. And we're really looking forward to seeing what's going to happen with our sports programs. So as we've talked about several times before, educational-based athletics are different than our youth programs because they're related to our schools and, you know, different regulations where that exists. So what I want to talk about tonight is not only what does fall sports look like, but what can we do between now and then to get our kids active with their teams and with their coaches, but obviously in a safe way. So just a reminder why education-based athletics is so important. They are more than just sports. They really prepare students for college, career, and military by extending the learning opportunities in the classroom. Students are engaging in physical activities now with other people. So we want to look at a way that we can bring them together with their coaches to engage in helping to develop the emotional, social, physical, and cognitive skills that education-based athletics bring with it. It's important that everybody knows that the presentation, and I know you were sent a copy of it. Some things have been tweaked a little bit since the presentation was sent to you, I believe, on Friday. So this is really a synthesis of information. It is not, you know, I wrote it every letter from beginning to end, just in my little head. It's a collaboration of everything. There's, as you know, there's an incredible amount of information out there about COVID. Changes week by week, hour by hour, sometimes minute by minute. So it's important to know that a lot of the information supports each other, but periodically you'll get some information that's in conflict. Obviously, as we talked about, the New Hampshire stay-at-home order has been lifted, and we're now in a safer-at-home advisory. So all of the information there relative to the amateur and youth sports, significant guiding documents for this presentation. The CDC requirements, obviously, for employers and employees is another necessary document to follow. The NFHS is the National Federation of High Schools. It oversees not only athletic programs, but also drama and music programs and other activities. And they've come out with a guiding document. So it's really important that we look at that one. I've had the opportunity and privilege this spring to be part of a national collaboration of athletic directors. Been pretty interesting, sitting in some meetings, you know, in early April and talking to an A.D. who, it's snowing in Michigan, but in Hawaii, it's 85 degrees. And we've put together, through that organization, put together a resource of how can we start sports again? In addition to that, the New Hampshire Athletic Directors have a task force where one of the documents you were sent separately from the presentation is their document of best practices. And one of the things I really liked about that best practice document is it cited the resources that support each of the best practices. The NHIAA, our state organization, is also working through their Sports Medicine Committee on a task force to also create guidelines and together come, bring all of the information together on what's going to happen from the state association level. There's also organizations. There's another task force in addition to our state-to-state task force, but also a collaborative between Maine, New Hampshire, and Vermont that are working together. Just important that the collaboration has been absolutely unbelievable as people look to get kids back with their teams. And the final other resource I used were what are other districts doing around us? Several districts that we'll talk about in a few minutes have already started their summer workouts. So the guiding principles, and again, I'm not going to read to you everything that's here, but obviously, we know that COVID spreads through the respiratory droplets. So everything we're going to talk about, everything we're going to do is to decrease that potential exposure. We're going to look at interactions between players. What happens when students share equipment? What about our at-risk and vulnerable individuals, our students, as well as our staff and our coaches? Looking at who is nonessential at our athletic events? How do we define our local geographic area? And then obviously, transportation is a big thing. So the next few slides, information comes directly from the NFHS guidelines for return to sports, as well as our New Hampshire document. So right now is what students are doing at home. The lowest-risk activity level is they're doing drills and conditioning with people with whom they live. The next step would be bringing them together in small groups on campus. That's what I'm looking for to do, starting as soon as possible. The next step of increased risk would be full-team practices. What happens if we start on time in the middle of August and we've got 75 football players on the field, or 50 soccer players, or 70 volleyball players in a gym? So that would be full-team practice. Looking at the next step, once teams are made and things like that, that they're going full-force, 100% effort within team competition. So scrimmages among themselves, drills among themselves. And then the next level of risk involves what happens now when we play teams from other communities? And then obviously, the highest risk is when we go outside of our geographic area, outside of the state, which we don't do a lot during our regular seasons, but sometimes during the preseason or postseason, like our track teams, our cross-country teams, our wrestling teams, they'll compete in New England tournaments where, or invitationals may involve people from other states. So that's activity. If we look at our individual sports, there's three levels here of risk. And I apologize, my clock's going off behind me. The different levels of risk for our sports define not just individual activity, but what about the sports themselves? So the lower risk, obviously, are the ones that we can do while we're social distancing and don't have to share equipment. The moderate risk has a lot of oars in it. Does it, I think of soccer. And I'm going to pick on soccer because I know Steven Norris is a soccer player, that there's times during a soccer game that players are very close to each other, but yet there's times that they're pretty far apart from each other. So that's a moderate-risk example. And then the highest-risk example is when there's really close sustained contact between participants. Your wrestling, your football, your boys' lacrosse, competitive cheer, would be our highest-risk sports. So the next few slides just break down the risk levels with the sports we offer here in Nashua, both at the middle and the high school level. So these are all of our sports that would fall. So you can see, by season, we do have some of the lowest-risk sports that we can control a little bit more. Moving into the moderate risk, you can see that most of the moderate-risk sports are in the winter, our relays, swimming relays, and running relays, obviously, because there's that transition and that sharing of equipment there where they fall into the moderate risk. The NFHS also defines this group of sports that are moderate risk, but could be lower risk. For example, I'll use volleyball as an example. Obviously, the ball is going to be sustained in action. Different people are going to be touching the ball with their hands, with their forearms, potential for sweat or spit to get on the ball. But it becomes a lower risk if at every dead ball, we swap out that ball to sanitize it. Every time a player comes off the court, do they hand sanitize? Things like that. The NFHS is also looking at modifying some rules that will also reduce risk. Volleyball's a unique sport that, in the middle of the batches, you change benches. So by eliminating that changing of benches, that would also reduce the risk a little bit. And then our highest-risk sports, again, the four that I just mentioned, the football, the competitive cheer. Cheer has two things, cheering it at games versus their competitions. So as we know, with a lot of documents and a lot of information that's coming out, phases are not the same depending what you're referring to. So I've broken down our plan and our hopes for reopening from summer, right through the start of fall competition into four phases. The first one, I'd like to see happening as soon as possible. I was thinking, hopefully, the last week of June, leading into the Fourth of July holiday. Opening our fields and tennis courts for personal and group use. The tennis courts were opened on Monday. So that part has already been taken care of and to allow our teams to come onto campus outside for small group workouts. The next phase would be after two or three weeks of that implementation. So hopefully, middle to the end of July. Continuing what we're doing in Phase One, but increasing the group size. And we'll talk more details about that in a minute. Being able to have a limited use of shared equipment, such as footballs, soccer balls, lacrosse balls, volleyballs, baseballs, softballs, as well as our weight room equipment. And then also, at this point, I'd like to see us allow access to our weight rooms, as well as our gyms. The third phase is, once we get to the official mandatory team practices, which start in the middle of August for our high schools and start August 31st for our tri-county league middle schools. So that's the point where we're full-team practices, indoors, outdoors, sizes relatively unlimited, but yet still controlling our cleaning and our social distancing as much as possible. And then the final phase, which I think has the biggest question marks around us, is what happens when we start playing teams from other towns? And what does that look like, which would come end of August, early September? So just to give you an idea of what's going on around us, I did a very informal, brief survey of Division One schools, as well as the schools around us. Five schools began their summer workouts this past Monday. High school summer workout bylaws say that you can start once school is out for the year. So we would have been able to start on Monday, and normally, the fields and the weight room and the gyms would have been full Monday night. BG is planning to start theirs on next week. There are three schools that have plans, but no definitive start date. And then there were 11 of us, us included, that are developing plans, but don't have a start date. So looking at these six areas of concern, these are the six that I'm going to address as we go through. How can we control these things? What can we do, as much as possible, to reduce exposure, reduce the risk, so that we can get our kids started? So liability, we would look at the New Hampshire Universal Guidelines for employers and employees and develop an in-depth plan. What you're seeing here is just the nuts and bolts of it, but there would be very specific schedules. There would be very specific, if you're going to the track, you're to park in this parking lot and arrive at this time. So there would be a lot of detail shared. We would have meetings through Zoom with our coaches and our staff on what does screening look like? What do you have to do before, during, and after the trainings to keep everybody safe? And there would be a waiver signed by parents and guardians and our coaches, which includes additional risks due to potential COVID exposure. So safety, obviously, this is what we've been talking about since January, February. Staying home if you feel sick, period. Constant hand hygiene. Before you leave home, once you get to campus, before you leave campus, in-between drills, things like that. Avoid touching the face. One for athletes that would be important is no spitting, chewing gum, licking fingers, chewing or spitting seeds, like sunflower seeds, things like that. Doing as much as we can do to reduce those droplets from coming out. And then obviously, having face coverings. So that would be for staff, for students, for coaches, for anybody who's in the vicinity, unless they are actively engaged in a drill. Because as you all know, that have been wearing masks, it's kind of hard to breathe. So if you're being physically active, it would be near impossible to keep your face covered at all times. And then obviously, physically distance as much as possible. Continuing on safety, we would have to equip our coaches and our facilities with hand sanitizer so that the students could do that upon arrival and in-between drills and things like that. Surfaces and areas would need to be cleaned and disinfected. During my Phase One proposal, everything's outside. So the cleaning and disinfecting would be not as important until we get to the gym and the weight rooms. Sharing equipment would need to be clean and disinfected. Again, during that first phase, there would be limited to absolutely no sharing of equipment. Students would have to provide their own. Another thing, when students arrived, they would be encouraged not to bring items with them. But if they did bring their backpack, excuse me, down to the field, not only would the kids be physically distanced, but so would their things. You know, their backpacks would be spaced out just as well. Be no dugouts or benches areas used, no high-five handshakes, et cetera. Again, no encouraging, complete lack of contact. We'd outdoor practice. We'd increase the time between practices and events to allow one group to leave before the other group arrives and limiting our group sizes with current recommendations. And we would create cohorts schedules. So again, just to pick on soccer, for example, if we have 40 kids that want to participate in our summer workouts, they would be broken into four groups, and they would stay with that group. The groups would never interact. You know, if you're scheduled for 8:00 on a Monday morning, you're not going to show up at 10:00 because you overslept. If you miss your 8:00, you're done until the next time that your cohort meets. We're looking at screening our students and our coaches prior to every session. So upon arrival, there would be a temperature check. There would be screening questions based on their symptoms, their contact, and their travel. And accurate and detailed records would be maintained. Anyone exhibiting symptoms, have traveled, or had close contact would not be allowed access to the training sessions, and they would be sent home immediately. I know you have this slide in your packets. This was just an example that I had worked up. And this was more of a complete one. Originally, I was thinking that the screening would be one sheet per cohort. But in rethinking about it, I think it would be better to track each individual. So this would be, again, just to pick on Steven, sorry, Steve. You know, this would say Steven Norris at the top. And each day that he came to his cohort, he would be asked these questions. Temperature would be taken. And then the recorder column on the right would be the initials of the coach who interacted with Steven at that opportunity. This is another reason we need to have that spacing in between the different groups and that increased time between workout sessions so that coaches would have the time to do this in a relatively private manner. Coaches would be given trash bags at training sessions so that any trash that their cohort created would be removed with them. Again, trying as much as possible to decrease cross-contamination. Any equipment, including balls, should be cleaned at the start of the session, between drills, and at the conclusion of the session. And again, the cleaning schedule would be created and implemented in that detailed plan. Once again, that cleaning schedule, obviously, would need to involve the facilities, people, our custodial staff. And more importantly, once we get inside the buildings, to the gyms and the weight rooms. Transportation, it's important to note, this point of transportation is only to and from our summer training sessions. This does not address transportation once we're back in school and traveling to other places. We're going to strongly encourage our students not to carpool with people that they don't live with. Again, trying to maintain that lack of cross-contamination. Can we control this? No, but we're going to try to recommend it. So what happens once the kids arrive and we're in our training sessions? So we're not going to allow any locker room use. Students must arrive in the necessary attire, in the gear, everything that they need. There's going to be a very specific schedule set. What coach is working with what students, what time they're going to arrive, where they're going to park, what field they're going to use. Multiple groups can be on large facilities. So if you think of our high school tracks, we could have a group of 10 at either end of the track that don't interact with each other. No competitions, no scrimmaging, no person-to-person contact. And again, this would be outdoors only for that first phase. There'd be frequent breaks for hydration and sanitization, depending on what sport it is and what they're doing. And there'd be no common hydration station. So students would have to provide their own water or Gatorade or things along those lines. So a few dates for you. Again, the summer workouts could have started two days ago if this had been a normal spring, in summer, begin to our summer. So we're hoping to start that first phase of summer workouts as soon as possible and then move into that second phase of summer workouts in the weight rooms and the gyms within a couple of weeks. Looking at our official start dates, that would enter that Phase Three, if you will, of full-team tryouts and practices. We have three different start dates for our high schools, and all of our middle schools start on August 31st. So this is what we're looking to do in Phase One. Obviously, we have to follow the bylaws regarding our summer trainings. All students, staff, and coaches are going to be screened daily. Dr. Mosley and I have had a conversation about, are they tested or are they screened? I think the best practices recommendation at this point are the screening that I just went over a few minutes ago, which would include the temperature checks. And I'm hoping that the NHIAA will come out with their guiding documents with best practice recommendations within the next few days as well. Maximum of 10 people at a time. That's where we're going to start. Even though the stay-at-home order has been lifted and that gatherings of 10 is no longer a requirement, I think it's a good place for us to start. But that 10 also includes the coach. So it's one coach per nine students. As we increase that number, we would maintain that ratio of nine to one with our coaches because that would also help with the screening, that would help with maintaining the physical distancing, that would help with the face mask monitoring, things like that. Accurate attendance. And again, we talked about the specific schedules. Many of our kids have not been active since we shut down our high school and middle school sports. So especially in Phase One and partly into Phase Two, the focus would be on students' physical fitness, their individual fitness, their individual strength and conditioning, their individual skill and drill development. It'd be limited to no person-to-person contact in Phase One. That may increase a little bit into Phase Two. Any meetings, video time, chalk talks would all stay outside during Phase One. Face coverings would be required, as well as physical distancing of six feet. Once we move into that Phase Two, where we open up our weight rooms and gyms, the sanitation would be required. And the only equipment that would be shared at that point would be a ball or the weight room equipment. So the first phase, again, focus on the individual, maintain the physical distance. No shared equipment that would be touched by a hand. So for instance, field hockey and lacrosse, they can play catch with their sticks. Tennis, you could play tennis because you're, just don't touch the ball with your hands. Just use your racket. You could play soccer, work on your passing drills and shooting on the goalie and things like that, as long as there's no heading. You know, the goalie has their gloves on, things like that. So no physical contact between players. And to encourage the physical distancing, no protective equipment. So there'd be no helmets, no shoulder pads in lacrosse or football. So looking at Phase One in our high school facilities, these are the locations where we could have two cohorts in each location. Our tracks, obviously, our tennis courts, football practice fields, and our soccer fields. The layout of north is a little bit different. That at south, there's a separate fenced-in baseball and softball field where north does not have that. So those last two on the left-hand side are a little different depending if, you know, if it's really baseball, softball, we could increase the number of cohorts on those fields. And as we move into Phase Two, hopefully, that each cohort being of size 10 would increase a little bit. Going into Phase Two, obviously, as much of Phase One as we can continue, we would. We would increase the group size. We'd allow access to the weight rooms. We'd allow access to the gyms, and we'd allow sharing of balls. So volleyball, baseball, softball, football passing, things like that, as long as we're sanitizing the balls and the hands after each drill. Every time there's a stoppage and then we're going to transition to the next drill, everybody takes a moment to sanitize. And then sanitize again at the end of the training session. In that Phase Two weight room access, there'd be set hours. Staff member would be in there, physically distancing, monitoring, and wearing face masks. Looking at our two weight rooms, I would not suggest we go any higher than 15 students. That may be even a little high for spacing, but it may be okay based on, I might be doing an exercise and you're another student spotting me with your face mask on. So the access to the weight room would be from the exterior door. There would be no access, again, to water fountains or the locker rooms. And there would be 30 minutes in-between sessions for the students and the staff members before they leave to sanitize their own hands and things like that, put their face masks on, then sanitize the room prior to leaving. In addition to that, once we did the gyms, we would also access the gyms directly from outside doors and not through the hallways. So once we get to our Phase Two, same facilities, we would just add one cohort in each weight room, as well as the ability, our gyms are large enough, we could have at least two cohorts in each gym. Then we move into the middle of August, where the official season begins. So sports are able to conduct full tryouts and practices. So they're full-team workouts. There could be some person-to-person contact. Everything we've talked about in terms of screening and sanitizing and not sharing water bottles, spacing your bags, things like that, all of that would still be in place. We need to look at the sanitizing and cleaning of the balls and the equipment. At this point, scrimmages would only be among themselves or within neighboring towns, our closest communities, Hudson, Merrimack, Hollis, Amherst. Obviously, north and south could compete against each other. Obviously, north and south could compete against each other. One big question we have is if we are remote learning or on a hybrid model, once school starts, how do we get students back for practices and events? And then the final phase would be once our interscholastic events start. As much as above can be put into place as possible, but there's a lot of questions we have here to be answered. How are we going to transport students to our away contests? I spoke to our director of transportation yesterday, and he mentioned, right now, the requirements are no more than 13 students on a bus at a time. And until that increases, it's going to be very difficult for us to get our teams to contests. Because I know obviously the focus will be getting students to and from school at three different levels. In addition to just our away contests, we always have to keep in mind our Elm Street student athletes. They are bussed every single day so that they can practice. As well as our middle school field hockey program, all three middle schools compete, practice together at Penachuck, so they are bussed every day. We need to look at what we're going to do about fans. Are we limiting fans? Are we eliminating fans, things like that? Do we have the ability to livestream our events? And what do we do about competing against other towns? Transportation, we just talked about this a little bit. We're going to need more buses, and is that even possible? Not even just from a financial standpoint, but do we have the buses and the drivers? Do we limit away events to varsity teams only? But then if our opponents are doing the same thing, our younger kids are never going to get to play. Do we allow parents and guardians to transport their own children? That might be something that we need to look at where that's not something we allow now. If a student's going to compete, they have to travel with the team to the event. Can parents drive other students? But then that also raises the question, well, we're going to drive my student to Keene, but what if Keene says, sorry, there's no fans at our events? So these are a lot of questions that need to be answered before, before we get to competing. And then looking at attendance at events, obviously essential are our student athletes, the coaches, the officials. You can't have events without those people. Then our event staff, our medical staff, our athletic trainers are necessary. Depending on what kind of game it is, we might have to have security and police even more so if we're telling people that they can't come attend the event. And then we may need staff and media to televise and livestream and broadcast the events. And then non-essential would be other media and spectators. So some needs that we have, obviously, looking at immediate, our daily screening. I think in the summer and after school practices and games, as long as our coaches buy in, we can allow them. That's what a lot of our, the area towns are doing that have already started. It's the coaches that are responsible to doing this screening daily with their cohorts, and then they're giving the reporting to the athletic directors. If it's not our coaches, who's doing it and who's paying that person? Cleaning of surfaces and equipment, once we're inside, we talked very briefly, we, Dr. Mosley and I talked very briefly that once we're full-blown, you know, indoors and into the winter with our sports, we may need to look at hiring additional custodians specifically for the athletic wing. Not to pull them away from the current staff, but just they have a lot that they're going to be needing to do that we may need an additional person that's responsible just for our end of the buildings. We're going to need people at games and practices and things like that, monitoring the face coverings and the social distancing, limiting, and I already talked about the police presence. The bathroom facility cleaning, obviously, if we're going to have our students back on campus, we need to have bathroom facilities available. We're going to need supplies, hand sanitizer, sanitizing wipes and sprays and things like that. And signs that remind people to physical distance and face cover. We may need to look at some portable structures to use as locker facilities outside and a contactless ticketing platform. Even if we're not charging admission, if we're limiting admission, we may have to look at what that looks like. And then if we're not allowing fans, how can we broadcast events? And these last two, I will tell you, I know are kind of big pie in the sky ideas because getting Wi-Fi out to Stellows and all of our fields, both high schools, three middle schools, and putting in cameras to livestream the events, that's a pretty big expense. And I guess I'll open it up to questions. The last two slides, just so you know, are just some websites and a list of resources.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gingras. I have a list of people wanting to ask questions. But I just have one quick one. Did, were you able to check with the city regarding the face mask ordinance? Because my understanding is face coverings are required by all people over the age of 10 in all government, government buildings and businesses. So we need to keep an eye on that if we move forward to in the building, like that there can't be times when people aren't wearing their face masks.
Yep, and that's a great question, and I do have a call into Bobby Bagley to review all of this with her as well. Just obviously, as we all know, she's pretty busy right now, so we weren't able to arrange that meeting before tonight.
All right. I just, it just struck me because I, my son does karate and we're having karate in the park right now to make sure that everyone is socially distant and able, but all the kids still need to be wearing their masks and it's, it's hot out.
It is.
It was very hot today and I was sitting in the shade. All right. So Ms. Giglio, you commented first. Did you have a question or a comment? You're on mute, Ms. Giglio.
I was just agreeing that, that the way you were having us respond to the chat versus interrupting Ms. Gingras. Better way to go. I do have some concerns that involve lots of issues, but I, I really would like to hear from other people first, and then if my, my questions aren't covered, I'll ring in.
All right. In that case, Mr. Guarino, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Ms. Gingras for this presentation. It was very thorough. And there, there are a lot of issues that need to be covered. And there's a lot of unanswered questions. I guess my comment or question was about spectators. I think that looking at the history of COVID and how it has been spread, that it was sporting events was a big factor in spreading this disease. So I guess I don't know what the guidance documents say about spectators. I think we have to, that's a big unanswered question, and we have to keep our, our eyes out for that and how we can deal with that. Even, you know, because I know as some parents, when their kids are scrimmaging, they like to drive down and and watch, and so it's a big factor. And some of the big events, like some of the big sports like basketball and football and hockey and soccer and volleyball, there's a lot of spectators. But I think it's going to be very important for us to look at these events that draw a lot of people and, and do our utmost because if you look at the history over the past year or so with COVID and how it's been spread, it has been sporting events has been a real factor, one of the, one of the big, one of the big factors in spreading it. Now, I guess that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to comment on that. And I want to thank you, Ms. Gingras, for being very thorough, very, very good presentation.
Thank you. The spectator thing is definitely something that we need to address. I think that's something that as a state, we're going to need to address, or at least our division, our community of teams that play against each other. I know back in March, and again, Steve, I apologize, I keep picking on you, but Steven was on the North Basketball Team this year that we went from we're going to play in the quarterfinals at home to now we're going to play with no fans, to now we're going to play with two fans per student, to no fans, to the games are canceled and we're not playing at all. So I think that's a very big thing that we're going to have to address. And I think that's where my ability to hire more staff for events, whether it's at the school, even outside at the soccer fields or the field hockey fields or the cross-country meets, just constantly circulating, reminding people to keep their masks on if that ordinance is still in place, or to keep their social distancing and things like that. So I think I've been out and about, and there are a lot of people taking it very seriously, maintaining their distance with their face masks on, and there are some people that are not. So that will definitely take some work.
I think if I could just interject, I mean, I think the goal is to try to give our kids some type of, in addition to school, some structure around athletics. And everything at this point is on the table, and we have to explore that. What I mean, everything's on the table, there might be times where there might not be able to, we might not be able to have fans there because of where there's concerned of a spread or even a spike. And that way there, you know, we may, Lisa and Greg have looked at boosting our technology presence there. So we might not have any fans there. However, you might be able to watch the game on your phone. I think we can all agree, we would rather have the option of, of watching the game remotely or at home and have the kids there than not have any sporting events whatsoever. So we're looking at that. I mean, we try to, you know, part of what, you know, charged Lisa is that how do we get our kids engaged? How do we get them to, to participate, the kids? And maybe, you know, there's a fan limitation as well. So everything at this point is on the table. We will, I would, I'm looking at you, Lisa. It's ventured to say it's not going to be business as usual, given this environment.
Definitely not.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I've got quite a few questions here. I don't know where to begin. Thank you for the presentation. It was very well presented. I guess I'm going to start with the temperature check and the tracing. I mean, we've got Privacy Act, we've got HIPAA, and we've got FERPA, and I'm going to keep bringing this up because we have to make sure that our students' privacy is kept in check. So this is going to be a very big question with the parents. And I know that we have surveys out there now for the committees on whether or not, what kind of school year we're going to have, and I really want to see each and every survey from each and every parent and teacher that went out there because I'm really curious to hear what the parents would say about this. You also said about COVID-19 cleaning. What did we do before COVID-19? Did we clean the equipment all the time afterwards used, like it should have been maybe? Or is this all coming into play now because of COVID-19? I've noticed that everybody's learned that cleanliness is next to godliness again. The things that we learned when we were young that somehow fell by the wayside, that somehow we're doing now that should have been done probably all along. So we wouldn't so we wouldn't spread the cold, we wouldn't spread the flu, we wouldn't spread stomach viruses. But COVID-19 brought this whole thing back to life. So what did we do prior to COVID-19 and cleaning all the equipment and making sure we didn't spread anything?
It, I'll be honest, it depended on which sport and which team. I can tell you that our wrestling team is probably the best at cleaning their equipment. Those mats are disinfected every day, prior to practice, after practice, the students are skin checked. They actually started using a spray a couple of years ago that prevented the contracting of skin infections as well as the spread of skin infections. Our custodial staff does a great job in our weight rooms and our gyms as much as they can. Are they cleaned every single day after every group is used with disinfectant? I don't think so. Maybe, hopefully, this is the one positive that comes out of this whole experience is we're all going to realize that, as you said, if we do these things, colds aren't going to spread, flus aren't going to spread, things like that. So I'm going to hopefully take that as the, as the positive out of all of this.
Well, that's very interesting that you should say that. Because I know when you go to a health club and you touch the equipment, when you're done, you have to clean it. So why wouldn't we be doing this in the school where we have so many young people that things could spread rapidly because we're in closed quarters? Now, you talked about face masks, you talk about Wi-Fi, we're going to have to hire probably more custodians. We're going to have to hire people for spectators. You know, I guess I should pose this question to Mr. Donovan and Dr. Mosley. Where is this money going to come from? I think it's very important that these kids continue with the sports. I think what's happened here with the COVID-19 interrupted everybody's lives, and these students, our kids, need this social interaction again. They need to be out there. But with all this, there's a cost for the science, the principle, the supplies, the structures. You can't touch the tennis balls, you're going to have to use the racket. I mean, this starts becoming overwhelming. I know it's overwhelming to me as I'm reading, I'm taking notes on how many more people we're going to hire, how many of this? So we, as a board now, have to go back to the budget and we're going to have to say, where are we going to get the money for all this? It's an unfortunate thing, but you know, money doesn't grow on trees, and we're going to have to make these supplies and make these accommodations so we can get these kids back in the sports. So if people don't realize that we've got these budgets here and what comes with the budget, and there's money that has to go with all this, you better start thinking about this because our budget is so tight as it is right now, and I want to see these kids back and playing. And I hope we have some type of a product that disinfects really good, that has a long-lasting effect, not just 30 minutes, because I know hospitals have them, that we can clean and make sure our kids are safe and they get back to being social, that socialization piece that they really need. So I hope my questions and my concerns and comments don't go on deaf ears, but I'm going to tell you, that piece on that checking, tracking, on that temperature and everything that goes with it, all those questions, we better have a sound piece of, of background because of, how do I want to put it, a legal document, because if that gets into the wrong hand on those kids and me as a parent, I wouldn't want my child temperature taken, all these questions asked because there's a privacy HIPAA and a FERPA law. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Norris and then Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Steve, can I interrupt you for one second?
Yeah, sure.
I think Dr. Mosley was talking, but he was muted when he was talking.
I, I'll just say this much, and I'll, this is kind of the message that I've said for the reopening task force. I'll say it, you know, from Lisa's perspective. Our kids and our community need something. That's it. These kids need something to engage. You asked me the price. To me, the, the cost of a, of a student being connected to our schools, it's very simple price. It's priceless. In terms of where Lisa's coming from and the genesis of her argument and the purpose of this presentation is that we're not trying to infringe on anyone's tipper of personal information. We have to understand that one student or two students that come in and they're sick and they're participating in our sports or even attending our schools, that could shut the entire district down for two, if not a month, to two weeks, to a month. And all we're doing is trying to have our families and our kids return to some form of normalcy during this time. That's all we're trying to do, and we are trying to be as creative, innovative as much as possible. And whatever we put out there, there's always going to be a what-if or a but. We ask that, if that's the case, that's fine. We hear the criticism, but let's hear some of our, like, let's hear some suggestions in terms of how we can make this work for our kids. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. And I didn't mean to cut anybody off there. I think we're all right. Go ahead, Mr. Norris.
Thank you. So this clearly showed all your effort. It is very, very thorough. So I just have one comment. I know we talked about this at the reopening committee meeting. It was yesterday or the day before, and we talked about how we can kind of charge students with a lot of the cleaning too. So I know we're going to need to hire more people and more staff everywhere, but if, I think, I know a lot of students would be willing to help, willing to clean things down after they used them. So it's not like we have, like, the students just going to come in and leave right away. I know they'd be happy to help, happy to wipe down the balls, happy to wipe down the sticks, happy to do everything, just to, because I know everybody wants to get back to playing at this point. So they're willing to do anything it takes. And I also have one question. So I know we all are hoping to go back to school, but I know continuing with full remote learning is a real possibility at this point, but is the return to athletics and the return to extracurriculars solely dependent on that or like is that completely, if we don't go back, so say we go to full remote learning again, would that automatically rule athletics and extracurriculars out, or would there still be a way to do it?
Dr. Mosley, do you want to answer that one?
Yes. The intent, Mr. Norris, is to still have athletics. Doesn't matter what model we select. We got to, as, that's why we're trying to throw everything out there against the wall to see what happens. Our kids, our community needs this. So even if we go remote, the intent is to go, is to make sure we have extracurriculars. So in theory, Mr. Norris, to your question to the public, we could, if we select model number three as our start, which is the remote learning exclusively, we still want to have extracurricular activities and run them for our students.
Thank you. I'm glad.
Another piece of that also depends on what our opponents do. You know, if we're the only school that has athletic programs, we're not going to have anybody to play. I know as much as you guys like to play North and South against each other, I don't think you want to do it 18 times. So it, yes, as much as our intention is to have our athletic programs as much as possible, regardless of which school model, it's going to depend on the communities around us as well.
Yeah, and I know we've, obviously, we can't have full team practices with coaches and everything. But a few of the soccer players have been getting together, going on a field. We've been passing around, shooting. So everything's still social distance. Obviously, we don't play with each other or anything, get close to each other. But we're still able to run. We put a running program together, try to get people in shape. So we're trying to do everything we can to kind of get ready, but we can't obviously within succeed or play at all.
Yeah. So the next step is for you guys to be able to do that with your coach on campus.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Norris. Ms. Brown?
Thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Jingres, for how much work and the level of detail you put into that document. It really is pretty impressive. I mean, it's obviously a huge undertaking and something that I do think is really important. I agree with the necessity of group interaction for students to keep their physical health going and their emotional health at the forefront. So, which brings me to my first kind of question. Are we thinking of having sports that are not traditionally in season doing cross-training and kind of preseason conditioning? More an effort to get kids active, make like, middle school and high school kids active this summer? And then if we were to do that, are we able to provide opportunities to actually more, for more kids to be involved? For specifically, I'm thinking, sports that traditionally are cut sports. You know, you can't play, you can't have 50 kids on a basketball team because nobody gets to play. But I think this actually could be a good way to leverage on some opportunities to get more kids involved and see, see sports from a different perspective in these small group environments. How, so how would you address the team element of that? Would these be any kids who are interested in volleyball or soccer or whatever? Would they be open to that or would it only be kids that have been on a team already?
No. So that's actually a great question. And that's one of the requirements of our summer workouts, is they have to be open invitations. So normally, we're able to communicate this with the students prior to school getting out. You know, when are the, when's the weight room going to be open? When are soccer workouts going to be? When are volleyball workouts going to be? So, but they are open workouts. So anybody who is a student in Nashua, you know, obviously, within grade, we don't want a six-year-old coming out and playing soccer with our 18-year-old boys. That wouldn't be safe for anybody. So we, you know, they're open invitations. We put it out through our coaches who have a great presence on social media. We would put it out through our Twitter. We would put out through a lot of information to get it out there that anyone interested in playing soccer, here are the requirements. Here's how you're going to sign up for a particular time slot. Here's, you know, if you want to do soccer and basketball and volleyball, by all means, you can do that. Because the summer workouts are open not only to our fall athletes, but probably our biggest summer workouts are our basketball teams, who are a winter sport. So basketball is open. Our lacrosse teams have open fields and things like that. Baseball and softball, as we know, have already started throughout the country. So there's a lot of opportunities that would be open. The big piece is having our coaches come in and be willing to run these sessions. We do have a few of our middle school coaches who do run some summer workouts on a regular basis. And I'm hoping that that will expand a little bit this year, knowing that kids have been so sedentary since March. This is a perfect example of why I fought so hard for our spring coaches to be paid because they do this every summer. And some of them are chomping at the bit because, as I said, they would have started two days ago.
Thank you. So the other side of that question is, if a parent or a student is not comfortable breaking the social distancing guidelines and chooses not to participate in those preseason conditioning, is there, I, is there a way that we can prevent any kind of unwitting rules? Hey, you didn't show up for summer conditioning, so sorry, you're not going to, you don't get the same focus from a team, from making the team?
That is something we emphasize all the time. Summer workouts are not mandatory. They're completely optional, be it this summer under these conditions or be it any other summer before that. They're optional. Once the season starts, again, soccer starts on August 17th. Once that date comes, if you don't show up at that point, yes, now that's going to be held against you. But anything prior to that, it's, it's not mandatory.
Excellent. Okay, so my next question is a little more specific and I realize we're not there yet in the next phase. But for the weight room access, and I kind of am with you, I do a lot of lifting myself. And so I realize how close the quarters are in there. 15 might be a little tough for numbers to keep it safe. Have you thought, considered like a regimented workout or workout stations where kids could like rotate through, something like that?
Yep. We have talked about that. I've talked to some of my coaches who work out regularly in the weight rooms with their teams. And we've talked about even kind of expanding the weight room, like bringing the yoga mats right outside the weight room rather than them being inside. So some of the workouts that they would normally do in the weight room, they're doing during a weight room session, but to create more space between people, they're doing them either in the hallway right outside the room or outside. Even bringing the jump ropes outside, some of the exercises that they might be doing with some free weights, bringing those right outside and being able to kind of make our weight rooms a little bit bigger by using the outdoor space.
Thank you. I guess my last question about, I guess it's out all the way at phase four, when we're talking about competing, full-on competitions. And I'm guessing that probably still has, is up in the air a little bit. I think, my personal opinion is, I think it'd be great to get kids together in small groups and have coach-led workouts outdoors, get them physically moving. I think that's fantastic. And then even once they get their team together, I, my biggest concern would be bringing kids together in a competition element against kids they're not seeing regularly, it's outside their normal cohort. If we are unable to, if it still feels unsafe in the fall to have those full-scale competitions with other area teams, would you, had there just been consideration to do, kind of keep it more low-key, an intramural sport and continue practices through when your usual season, really focus on drills and individual player development? Something kind of transitioning that element?
Everything is on the table. Everything's on the table. We want to get the kids active. And we want to help them continue to be healthy. Also, with our coaches, it's not just about them being physically active, but our coaches do a lot with their social, emotional well-being and their nutrition and their sleep and their hydration and all of those things. So, you know, if it comes to the point where it's unsafe for us to compete against other towns, yeah, we're going to do something. Maybe we are going to play North and South 15 times. You know, that would be a lot of fun, actually. So there would be, there, everything's on the table. I eat, sleep, or actually, I don't sleep, thinking about this. And everything that I can do to get our students back to doing the things that they love and providing their parents the opportunity to watch their kids do the things that they love. So we're trying really, really hard in doing everything that we can to make that happen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Bishop?
Hi. Oh, I have sneakers coming in. One second. So I just wanted to speak to Paula's question about the screening. What we do at work, and I watch them do it every day, is they're literally just asking, have you been exposed to anybody with COVID? Have you been around with anybody with suspected COVID? Have you been in a facility where there's been COVID? And are you feeling okay? And it's those four questions every time you come in the building and then they do a temperature check and then you keep track of it yourself. They don't ask any HIPAA questions because it's in the middle of the lobby. So you're not disclosing any information that is medical. It's more informative. And I did just sign my daughter up for field hockey in the fall. So I just signed all of those extra new consents that are on, that are online. I thought they were great. I think they really covered all of the bases. So I think if we continue doing that, we could be safe. And I think in regards to getting the testing done, I bet there are a ton of parents who are within the sporting community that are LNA's or RNS that would be willing to volunteer their time, much like we do snack shacks. And you don't need to keep a log of anything. You don't need to keep people's names written down. You just, you have to say when you're coming into these, these events that you're telling the most accurate information that you know and you're self-checking, which is all we're doing at the hospital. So I think if we can do it that way at the hospital, we can probably do it that way at sporting events or practices. But hopefully that answers your question, Paula. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Bishop. Mr. Gao?
Thank you, Ms. Raymond, and thank you, Ms. Jingres, for putting together the wonderful presentation. I just had a question that's fairly specific. Maybe you mentioned that there would be a maximum of like a 10-person attendance for the practices in phase one. So I'm wondering for sports like golf, where really, like, at the maximum, you'll have four people in the same hole at once, like, will this maximum still be enforced?
So that's a good question. I kind of focused that idea and those are based on Federation guidelines, state guidelines, task force guidelines, best practices. Focused on the sports that traditionally do summer workouts. Basketball, field hockey, football, volleyball, lacrosse, sports like that. Whereas most of the time, a summer workout for a golfer is to go golfing. You know, you're going to be in a group of four, your coach may or may not be there. But the best thing for you to do to prepare for golf season is to just go out on the course and go golfing. So pretty much your foursome or maybe eight of you get together and your two foursomes back-to-back, as long as you're following all of the guidelines of the golf course, you're in accommodation of everything that we're trying to do. But yet, that's a little bit different because that's more on your own than you would really do with your coach in the summer.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
That answered your question.
Thank you. Ms. Seem or Ms. Odin, did either of you have comments or questions? You're both on mute, so.
No, thank you. I just want to thank Mrs. Jingres. As usual, she's top shelf. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Seem. And I forgot to say for the record that Ms. Seem joined us at about 6:20 PM. Ms. Odin? I'm not hearing Ms. Odin. So it looks like Ms. Brown had a follow-up question.
Actually, and this was just inspired by Mr. Gao's question about golf. Has there been any talk for those teams that are maybe a little bit smaller or have kind of, I don't know, a different skill set than large-team sports? Maybe doing a mixed-team cross-training workout to get those extra kids together? That might be kind of a cool way.
Absolutely. Our, you know, our golf teams, our tennis teams, even some of our swim teams are pretty small. Even though they may not be doing sport-specific things, they're working on cross-sport skills.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And thank you, Ms. Jingres. As I mentioned earlier, my kids also enjoy athletics. And so I was very excited when, they're a little younger, but when their athletic programs started up again in the last week or so, because our kids need something to keep their, I really believe that physical health and mental health can be tied. Not always, but I do think that when you're attending to your physical health needs, your mental health can improve. Especially when our kids have been socially isolated for so long. Yes. So at this point, it sounds like we're looking for a motion at least to get your phase one started, which would be to do workouts in the, opening the fields and the tennis courts for small group use and having outside-only workouts. And then are you hoping that we will make a further motion in July after we've tested that out for a few weeks?
Obviously, that would be up to you, whether after a couple of weeks you want me to come back and we talk about it again or whether or not at this point we could look to approve summer. And then come back to talk about, all right, now we're approaching August 14th when full-team workouts are supposed to start. That might, that might be a point in time where, yeah, we definitely need to talk about it. By then, we may know what's going on with school. We may know what the state has done with either starting sports on time, delaying sports or whatever their plan is going to be for the actual fall season.
Okay, so I will open it up to board members.
I make a motion that we approve the program as presented for the summer sports. Is that adequate?
I would say yes, based on what Ms. Jingres just said.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have seconded by Ms. Timmons and then seconded by Ms. Bishop, but I saw Ms. Timmons first. So, does anyone have any further discussion on Ms. Seem's motion to approve summer sports? I don't see or hear anyone.
Quick question.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Jingres.
I apologize. May I just get clarification that when Mrs. Seem said "as presented", that means starting as soon as June 29th? Is that okay?
That's how I interpreted her motion. Ms. Seem?
That's how I intended it. The sooner the better.
Thank you very much.
So can we do a friendly amendment to say to immediately begin summer sports?
Absolutely. Did you hear me?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much. I just wanted to write it down and I was writing and not talking. Walking and chewing gum. Ms. Brown?
Do we have to add in there in the friendly amendment, immediately begin summer sports under the guidance of Ms. Jingres's plan? As opposed to just saying approve summer sports?
Right, no, it was immediately begin summer sports as presented by Ms. Jingres. I believe is what Sandra had originally said.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
It will take a few days to get the training done and the sign-offs and things like that. So I think it's realistic that June 29th is immediate.
Yes. Yes, but you know, if you're ready a couple of days early, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was, and then is there any other discussion before Mr. Guarino begins the roll? I don't see any other hands or hear anybody else. So, Mr. Guarino, you can begin.
Okay. On the motion to begin summer sports as presented immediately, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you all very, very much. Our kids and our coaches are going to be very appreciative.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Jingres, for putting this together. I would like to schedule to have you come back at the end of July or before August 14-ish, to give us an update on how things went with the summer. And then so that we can do a further motion as appropriate for continuing it into the beginning of the fall.
Great. Thank you very much. Have a great night, everybody.
All right, thanks so much. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Did anyone have anything that they needed to remove from the consent agenda? I don't see or hear anyone, so I'd be willing to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Bishop. Mr. Guarino, when you're ready?
Okay, on the motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Did anyone have any communications outside the consent agenda to present this evening? I don't see or hear anyone. Right, zero on my paper. And that brings us to the superintendent's comments. Dr. Mosley?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Couple of things. You know, the first thing I'd just like to say is, believe it or not, it's been a odyssey of a school year with COVID-19. And with that said, our last day of school was this past Monday, June 15th. I want to thank the faculty, the students, staff, everyone who made this year possible. It wasn't easy. We got through it. But, you know, at the same time, the end of the year is here. I'll get to that in a sec. A couple of things that are going on right now. We have our reopening task force and subcommittee meetings meeting right now. It's been a prodigious undertaking. Ms. Gilio and I, and Stacy Hines, and Yeti, and Tara. I'm sure I'm forgetting something or someone, so, but if you want to just jump in, Sharon, please do at the end of my comments. But we've been planning to plan our meetings. And so we had our first official reopening task force meeting two days yesterday, excuse me. And it was a very productive meeting. Again, like anything, when you're trying to reopen or do anything in this environment, you give a presentation, you give a plan, but then there's more questions. So the good news is that we have more questions. We have a plan. We do have subcommittee meetings. We do have subcommittee meetings that are, uh, some committees of the strategic, I'm sorry, the subcommittee meetings of the reopening task force. And I encourage anyone from the public or even our school personnel, if you still want to join those meetings, those subgroups, you're more than happy to do so. The only thing I would say is that it is a strict schedule, I mean, a tight schedule for us because we want to make sure that we get the recommendations to reopen back to our, our, uh, our, our task force and eventually to the Board of Education in a timely manner. We're looking to make some type of recommendation, and the board would have to make some type of consideration sometime-ish, late July and early August. The second piece of this is that we're going to have our virtual graduation take place on June 21st. It's going to be broadcast, televised, all the great things. Now, I just wanted to say to our seniors, I know it wasn't the ideal year to end this way, but at the same time, we recognize that you didn't have a prom. So we're going to give you a two-for-one, so to speak. You get two graduations. One of them is the virtual. The other one will be an in-person one. We are slated to have an in-person graduation on, we've reserved August, August 1st and 2nd. I said we slated for that for the North. I'm sorry. It's a citywide graduation, and it's a little different than what we've done before. A citywide graduation means that we're encompassing all of our, our programs. That's our adult education, our night school program, and our graduates from the North and South. So we have designated two days to do that. Our Nate Burns and Keith Richard and Laurie Rothaus are planning that, that once they get all the details and the fine details planned out, they will disseminate that to the community, everyone involved. It's a large prodigious event, but we're looking forward to it. I like to say that it has been probably the most challenging year that, for our kids and for our families. And I have, I would say that at this point, I want all of our faculty and our kids to power down, stay off of Zoom, stay off of Google Classroom, go outside, build a fort. Tara and I have this saying, it's called the "zoom eye". The zoom eye means you just stare at things. And you just stare at things because you're, it just feels like you're talking to a television. So I, we have to cure our zoom eye, and that involves exercise, going outside, taking walks. Today's a beautiful day. Limited your screen time. And I say "screen time", that includes technology and phones as well. No student should be on their phones outside when they're taking time away. Finally, I'll leave this to all of the, to those individuals that celebrate this. Happy Juneteenth. It's coming up on Friday. I wish you all well. It's a, it's a holiday that I think, if you don't know, I'm not going to share it with you. I think you should go online, take a look at it. And Ralph Ellis wrote a book. Ralph Ellis wrote a book called "Juneteenth". It's a, it's a great read. I encourage people to just spend some time to understand the significance of that American holiday. Thank you so much, and that's all I have to share.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I appreciate you giving us an update on both graduation, the task forces, and Juneteenth. And I do hope that everybody goes and looks that up because I think that's a great way to start summer vacation with an educational activity that will make them better citizens. So I'm going to just kind of go around and ask people if they have a response. Ms. Gilio?
Hi. Um, yes, um, we did meet just yesterday with the entire task force. And it was, um, even though we couldn't meet all together in a room, it was really good for me to see all of the people involved because many of them are people I had never met before. And there was a lot of enthusiasm, and, and I echo what Dr. Mosley said, that the subgroups are more than happy to get input from people, from parents, from public. So there is a link right on the main page of our, of our school district website where you can just click on and get information on the task force. And I encourage everyone to have a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Uh, Ms. Timmons?
Um, yes, I just wanted to know how many people participated in that first, uh, work force? Dr. Mosley or Sharon?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Two-six, twenty-six.
Yes.
Thank you.
That was everyone.
Yes, that's wonderful.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's great news. Okay, Mr. Guarino?
Yes, thank you, Madam, Madam President. I just want to say real quick that this has not been an easy year. And I want to thank teachers and the parents who hung in there. And, you know, they really hung in there, and they went above and beyond for our kids. And so I hope that they can get some rest and take some time for themselves. And I just want to thank you, not just as a member of the Board of Education, but also as a parent, uh, for, for everything that you've done for our kids, to all the teachers out there. So that's all I wanted to say.
Uh, Ms. Brown?
I have no comments this time. Just happy summer to everyone. Yay!
Ms. Bishop?
I also want to second Mr. Guarino in thanking our teachers and our staff for taking an unconventional time and making it the best they possibly could for our kids. I know my kids, their teachers were fantastic in how they presented the information. This was a feat that can only be summed up to magic and experience and expertise, which is exactly what we have in this district. I had a quick question. No, I don't have a question, but I'm hoping, it's not question time. I'm hoping that we have an end date for when the task forces are going to have their presentations done, just so we know when we can start planning for things. So hopefully that was brought up in the meeting. But again, thank you to the teachers and staff and everybody. It's, it's been real. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to say to everybody, I hope everybody has a great summer and relaxes. And I'm being positive about the COVID-19, that hopefully it will go and it will stay away. And they said if it came back, it wouldn't be as bad. I've been reading all the literature on all this from CDC, WHO, and everybody else. I have a stack of this, but everybody should just enjoy the summer and relax. Thank you to everybody for this incredible year that they had to pull together and make it happen for the students.
Ms. Odin?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank our teachers, our students, and our parents. Certainly, remote learning has been a challenge, more of a challenge for some than others. But it has been, uh, on the whole, I think it's been very well done with very little notice, very little training. So, uh, thank you to all of those people. Also, I am just thrilled that we are going to have an in-person graduation. For me, it is the high point of being on the board. It's a great honor to see our students walk across the stage to receive their diplomas. And I want to thank Mr. Richard, Mr. Burns, and Ms. Rothaus because for them, uh, more work continues on a very compressed schedule and a very important, for a very important event. So I want to thank them. And I will say I am, I am hoping that August 1st and 2nd brings us nice weather. Thank you.
And Ms. Seem? Ms. Seem, you're still on mute? Okay, I still can't hear her, so I guess we'll skip her. But, uh, Mr. Guarino and Ms. Bishop, you made me just think about the last couple of Zoom meetings that my daughter's fourth-grade teacher tried to supervise. And I, I really, I, the teachers, especially at the elementary levels, had their work cut out for them with the Zoom meetings. And I think they've deserved a little bit of a break. So I hope that they are taking some time. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Seem.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Seem.
I just wanted to say that when Mrs. Jengris came forth for her job as Director of Fiscal Education, it broke my heart because she was such a wonderful math teacher. But I see now that it was her heart's goal. This is where her heart is. And, and it's always so inspiring to see a teacher who, who loves what they're doing, and because they love it, they do it so well. So she is only one of many in our district, and she's certainly one that leads the pack. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seem. All right, student member of the board comments. Mr. Norris, you are first in my little grid, so I'm going to call on you first.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, most of my comments had to do with the athletic thing, so we already talked about that. But, uh, I'm glad that we approved the athletic thing. I know it's, we've already been kind of getting together, but having a coach there and getting together as, even formally as your team, it, it's a big deal. I know a lot of kids are so much happier getting together with a team when they're playing sports, when they're at extracurriculars than the opposite. And I'm also happy that no matter what learning method or model we go back into next year, there's going to be an attempt to try to have some sort of extracurriculars in sports because I know they're just so important. Everybody wants to do everything they can to get back to doing some sort of normal, but we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Mr. Gao?
Um, thank you, Ms. Raymond. I also, just like Stephen, am really thankful that the sports are going to be continued again. I think that's super important. And, um, to add on to what Ms. Brown said, actually, I do think that inclusion of the students who typically aren't on the sports teams will be really interesting, actually. You know, not only for their mental health, but, you know, for their physical health, even their learning during remote learning. Like, you know, when you're sitting in front of a laptop the whole day, it's, it's difficult to pay attention. So I think really exercise can help break that up and increase the attention span. On top of that, I, I think one of the other really important things is discussion on also academic extracurriculars, meaning like clubs, other organizations like those, or even like there's like math. I think there's like a math team at our, at South, like these other academic competitions as well. I think those conversations really need to be held as those are equally as important as sports. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gao. I could not agree more. Not being coordinated myself, I did all of those, like math team and academicathlon and all those really cool things. So I can't imagine going through high school without them. So I certainly hope that in the coming days, as the task force does some of their work, that, that we start talking about other student activities and whether or not they can be done safely. And we look to other districts too to see what they're doing about their academic teams. Okay, committee on the budget. Mr. Guarino, did you bring your notes from Monday night's meeting this evening?
I have them somewhere. Not sure where they are. In this book. That was actually a special meeting of the Board of Education, right? It wasn't actually a budget, budget meeting.
Yes, I suppose that's true.
Yeah. But I did take notes. And, but I don't, I don't have them readily available.
That's all right. I happen to, no, take are extraordinary. I have mine right in front of me. And I, Mr. Donovan's here, so I'm sure he can answer anything that we miss. I just wanted to give a quick update to the public. Because of COVID-19, we did have some extra space in the budget this year, which is pretty exciting and almost never happens. So we were able to have a special meeting on Monday night and approve the purchasing of some English language learner books and materials and some software for our business department. So I'm very excited about that. Oh, thank you, Ms. Kinsonella. So we were, we were able to, we weren't able to get all $1.5 million off of here, but we were able to get the ELL books and materials. We are able to do some paydowns on LED lights, Smart Start programs, which will free up money in our operating budget for next year, and purchase some of the software and scanning of our old documents, which is required. So I think that's all really good news, and if only we could be so lucky all the time. Mr. Guarino, anything to add?
No, I think you covered it.
Mr. Donovan? Anything to add?
Uh, no, you covered it accurately. That's what we're, the total of the, of the surplus this, this year at this point is $820,000.
Thank you. All right, so next up is the Committee on Finance and Operations. Ms. Odin?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Raymond. Our last meeting was June 9th. My first motion is to recommend to approve purchasing 700 computers from IT insiders using the fiscal year '21 budget funds account 91, decimal point 1, decimal point 992225-dash-71221.
Second?
Okay, seconded by Ms. Gilio. Any discussion, Ms. Odin?
No, that was the... Uh, no, that was the, the low bidder, and it's a, a local company. So, uh, I, I think, uh, that might help with the, the Chromebook issues.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Can I have one? Can I ask a question?
Uh, yes, go right ahead.
At some point in time, will we get an overview on where we are in the technology department? How many we still need, you know, where, what we're looking at as a deficit in that area?
Yes, so the technology subgroup of the reopening task force is looking at that. Um, and I've asked, um, for us to schedule another budget meeting, um, sometime at the end of July, beginning of August, um, to see if our, um, budget that we approved for fiscal year 21, uh, 2021 still reflects accurately our current needs. Um, so I'm hoping to have, um, IT make a presentation, um, at that as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments?
Oh.
Um, I have a quick question, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, go ahead. I can't see anyone again, so, um, Mr. Gao?
Yes.
Okay, yay. I recognize your voice. I'm quite proud of myself. Go right ahead.
Okay, um, so the 700 additional laptops, um, from my conversations with like teachers in the past, I was under the impression that, um, with the laptops that we had before purchasing these unit laptops, that, um, how, every household had a laptop. Meaning like, for example, even if a household had like three students, that they all had to like share one laptop, would this additional 700 be able to provide for every single student? So that there's like a one-to-one laptop to student ratio?
Mr. Donovan, you look like you have an answer.
Yes, these are actually not laptops. These are desktops to replace eight, nine-year-old desktops within the school district. But your question regarding, are we considering a one-to-one at a Chromebook level? Yes, that's a possibility. That's one of the things we're looking at in the, um, in the, uh, the groups that we have about going back to school.
I'm just curious if, if you don't mind me asking, like, how much more laptops do we need? Like, how much off are we?
To get everybody a laptop? We don't have many laptops at all unless you call a Chromebook a laptop. Um, we have, to get, to get everybody a Chromebook, the problem with the Chromebooks is they, after six or seven years, they're no good anymore. So you've got to constantly rotate them out. Um, we really don't have many laptops at all. So it would be, um, Chromebooks would be the way that we would go. Um, and to do it, I think it would cost us about eight, seven to $800,000. But that would just cover us now. And then next year, we'd need another chunk, and the following year, need another chunk, because we have a lot that are, uh, going on beyond their useful life, where the license won't, won't work anymore.
And just to reflect, uh, refresh everyone's recollection, we have about 11,000 students total?
Yes.
Good. Any other questions or comments on Ms. Odin's motion regarding purchasing computers?
I just wanted to say, when, when, when Joshua was talking about it, when Mr. Gao was talking about it, I think he was asking if every child in the household would have their laptop. Is that what you're asking? Like, if you had three children, there'd be three in the house?
Yes, I meant that. And also, like, in terms of, like, the number of laptops we still need, not necessarily like for every single student in the district, but for the students who don't have their personal laptops. I don't know whether we have.
I don't know. I think we would have to do a, another survey to find out. Because the original survey that went out was about access to an internet device within the household.
And that was, when I was asking the question about the IT coming and giving us a report, that was the kind of information that I was looking for. At one time, we got those, uh, on a, on an ongoing basis. And so we always knew how short or, or how rich we were, if you will. And it's, it kind of gives you a goal. It kind of gives you a direction that you, you know, when you're begging for money, you know how much you want to beg for. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, I, I can, um, also, um, speak to Mr. Donovan and, um, Mr. Rodriguez and, and Dr. Mosley offline, um, and see if we can answer that question, um, next month. Okay? Okay.
I, I apologize. I think I used the word Chromebook, but these are desktop computers. That, so I think they're mainly for staff. A lot of our staff are using very, very old technology. So this is starting to try to update some of that. Am I right, Mr. Donovan?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve all special education contracts.
Dottie, we still didn't vote on the first one. Sorry. So, Mr. Guarino, can you please call the roll on the motion regarding purchasing the 700 computers?
On the motion to approve purchasing 700 computers from IT insiders using fiscal 21 budget funds. Uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Ms. Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay, um, motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, move to approve all special education contracts listed on the memo dated 6/9/20 from Dan Donovan and Marsha Bagley.
Second? Ms. Gilio?
I'm seconding it.
Oh, okay.
I forgot the mute button.
Seconded by Ms. Gilio. Any questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Donovan?
Yes, the, um, there was a, a slight conflict. Um, the Carroll Center for the Blind on the memo, it says 40,000. The contract is actually for 30,000. So probably should, um, amend the motion slightly to note that Carroll Center for the Blind on the memo should be 30, not 40.
Right, Ms. Um, Odin, did you want to reword your, uh, motion?
Um. The.
So the.
Uh, after Marsha Bagley, uh, with, with the correction that the Carroll School for the Blind contract should read 30,000 rather than 40,000.
Great. Ms. Gilio, do you second that? Yes, she does. Okay. Any further discussion? I don't see or hear anybody. Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion, uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Move to approve the award recommendations to Marvell Glass for security vestibule construction at Penachuk Middle School in the amount of $58,670. $55,000 provided by the Public School Infrastructure Grant. The remaining balance of $3,670 will be paid for by the middle school project.
Second?
I will second.
Any discussion? Uh, seeing none, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion, uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. Move to approve the fiscal year 20 May transfer report as presented at the 6/9/20 fiscal, uh, Finance and Operations meeting.
I will second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion to approve the fiscal year 20, uh, May transfer report, uh, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, and that's it for tonight.
All right, thank you, Ms. Odin.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
All right, committee on policy. Sorry, Ms. Bishop?
Hi. So we met on June 2nd, um, and we reviewed just a couple of policies that I'll review now. Um, the first one is the recommendation to approve policy BEDA, Public Notification of School Board Meetings. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Oh, uh, I do.
Wait, one second. Did you make a motion to approve it, Ms. Bishop?
No. Did I?
No.
No, I didn't.
Okay, would, would you like to make a motion? And then we can.
I just want to talk to you guys all night long.
I know, and then we can.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Dean. And now, um, I'm sorry, was it Ms. Johnson who had a question?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I was, I was unable to make the meeting that night. I was out of town and I had no cell phone reception. So every poll, everything that you were changing, I just like, if you can get, just give me a summary of why. Public Notification of School Board Meetings, what's the purpose of that?
Um, let me pull back up those notes, unless, Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you have it right in front of you?
Um, the change in the notification has to do with the way we post our agendas and notifications. And so we don't send it to the newspaper or the local radio station anymore. The public distribution list is the school board members, um, City Hall, anybody else that we're supposed to be sending this information to. So all we did was take out the newspapers and local radio stations because we no longer do that. That's not our practice.
Okay, so I guess, on, you have to give notice, 24-hour notice. So you're just doing City Hall? Are you putting it on the school district site? Are you putting it out on Twitter, at Twitter also?
Uh, I don't believe we do it on Twitter, no. But we do post the meetings for the date and the time and the place of the meeting. But the public distribution list is, um, all of the people that we are required to send the notification to and, um, the different, for example, City Hall. But we do it through a distribution list that Ms. Kinsella and, um, Ms., I can never say her last name, Gabby's, um, they distribute those, um, agendas and minutes like they do to you. They send them to the, um, other folks that need to have them.
And this is covered under RSA 91?
Yes.
So we're in compliance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I interject something, Donna?
Sure.
Our, our distribution list does include news stations. It includes, um, I believe it includes, uh, reporters from The Telegraph and a couple of other, um, news agencies. So instead of, um, separating them out, it's just our distribution list. Multiple government agencies, multiple news medias, so it's, it's pretty, um, inclusive.
Thank you, Tara.
So let me ask a question. So if anybody wanted to find out from the public exactly who your distribution list is, you can supply that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Are, are the student reps included on the distribution list? Because I know, like, this meeting, we just, uh, we didn't get the link until, uh, later. But are the student reps included on that list, or?
That's a distribution list for just agendas. You get the full packet, Stephen.
Oh, sorry, even more. Thank you.
We typically don't send out the link to the Zoom until shortly before the meeting, um, so that it doesn't get buried in, uh, members' email inboxes. Does that make sense? Okay, any other questions or comments? I can't see anybody, so shout out. Okay, I don't hear anybody. Uh, Mr. Guarino, can you call the roll?
Okay, on the motion to approve BEDA, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Great. So the next one is recommendation to, um, rescind policy 1133, which was the notification of meetings, and it's now rolled into BEDA. So I make a motion to rescind policy 1133.
All right, seconded by Ms. Dean. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Okay, on the motion, rescind policy 1133. Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, nine to zero.
Fabulous. The next policy that we reviewed in committee, um, was BBAB. And I'm making a motion to approve this policy in regards to the roles and duties of the Board President and Clerk.
Okay, and seconded by Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Heard Ms. Johnson. Has anything changed, or you just changed the heading of it?
We rolled policy 1121 and 1122 into it. Um, and there, there were not, there were format changes, but there weren't, uh, structure and role changes.
Okay, so we just combined the other two docs into this one?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Sorry.
All right. Nobody answered. So, Mr. Guarino, go ahead.
On the motion to approve BBAB, um, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Great, thank you for that. Uh, the next two policies we just spoke about, um, I'm making a motion to rescind policy 1121 in regards to President of the Board, as it's now in the approved BBAB policy.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Shall we call roll?
Okay, um, on the motion to rescind policy 1121, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, on to the next one. Uh, looking, I'm making a motion to rescind policy 1122 in regards to Clerk of the Board, uh, for the same reason as policy 1121.
Nine second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Shall we call roll?
Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Um, on the motion to rescind policy 1122, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Honey? That's smoking. You might want to turn the burner off. Oh, sorry, we're still going. Oliver's making us dinner tonight, so I'm, I'm watching him from the dining room. So, oh, you're not making me? All right, just him and Sissy. So the last one is I'm looking, uh, I'm making a motion to approve the review, to approve. the policy DGF in regards to suspension of policies.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question, there are no changes to this policy.
No, it's just an outdated one that needs to be updated.
So, does any action need to be taken by the main board?
Well, it's one of those, it's old.
Okay. Ms. Consonella was nodding, yes, we need to have it, so that she could put the new date on it.
It just says that you've reviewed it, and it's currently up to date.
Right, fantastic.
Okay, so let me ask you a question, nothing was changed, it's just we're redating the whole policy, is that it?
To say that it's been reviewed by the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Shall we call roll?
Okay, on the motion to approve DGF, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Julio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, and that is it for what we brought to Committee on Policy. Our next meeting is, when is our next meeting? Do you know, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Uh, no, I do not, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
Okay.
Wednesday, July 8th.
Wednesday, July 8th, what would we do without you? Okay, so I'll see you all then. Thank you very much, on to the next one.
All right, thanks, Ms. Bishop. Next is Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. All right, so, we met on June 8th, 2020, and our first item of business is the recommendation to support the Middle School Science and Scope Sequence. So, I move to support the Middle School Science and Scopes Sequence as presented by the district.
Second. I seconded it.
Thank you. So that is actually available in your board packet, if the presentation that we looked over, how the scope and sequence will be laid out. The major change is changing Middle School Science from three different focuses, 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, Earth Science, Physical Science, and some other kind of science. And then, now it's kind of transitioning and integrating them in together, so it changes the focus years and time slots when that goes on.
Okay, any questions or comments? I had a question, and that was regarding students who are already in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, transitioning to 7th and 8th. Is there a mechanism to prevent them from repeating a science unit that they've already had?
Yes, there is, if you want me to answer.
Yes.
That's all I needed.
Okay, yes, okay, yes.
We did actually talk about that in committee, we're going to be doing a rollout, this will start in 6th grade this year. So 7th and 8th graders will stay on the current model, so they'll go ahead and finish the programming they've already have. And then, 6th grade, the rising 6th graders will start this new format.
Great. All right, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
Okay, on the motion to approve MS Science, Scope and Sequence, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Julio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Ms. Brown, you're on mute.
Thank you very much, okay, so our next item, I actually have to scroll back up here to get through my agenda. Thank you. So the next one is the recommendation of the Lucy Cawkins Pilot Writing Program up to the middle school level, it's currently the program we are using through the elementary schools. So this program would start taking that up through the middle school level, to keep kind of a consistent model. So, I move that we pilot the Lucy Cawkins Writing Program at the middle school level, grades 6, 7, and 8, for the 2021 school year.
So move.
Seconded by Ms. Timmons.
Seconded by Ms. Timmons. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Are all teachers going to be doing that as a pilot, or are there just certain teachers doing it?
Dr. McKinney, could you clarify that point for us?
Nope.
No, or Ms. Fitzpatrick, oh, sorry, thank you.
There it goes.
I'm just going back to our presentations, so, yes, we're piloting 10 kits of writing units in 6th grade, 4 kits in 7th grade, and 4 kits in 8th grade.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Odin?
Well, so, my understanding, I didn't hear the first number, is that 10 in 6th, grade 6, and 4, and 4 again in grade 7 and 8?
10 kits in 6th grade, 4 kits in 7th, and 4 kits in 8th.
Okay.
Then we'll purchase the remaining kits for 7th and 8th grade teachers in the fall of 2021, and then evaluate the PD and the needs going forward. So it's a beginning, I wouldn't say it's complete for all the teachers, but it's the beginning of the work.
Let me ask you, what would happen if those teachers that are piloting it say, this is not good for our middle school students? I mean, is this open, or has it already been adopted for everybody?
No, I think the term pilot means it's up for evaluation. I do think there's a large interest from the teachers, I'm trying to support them in that. The current writing curriculum that's there was written in 2014. I think we're looking to provide something that's more up to date and more engaging to kids.
I guess I would ask at that point, usually, at the elementary level, during my time teaching, when we piloted, we would pilot multiple programs so you could compare. Have we foregone that?
I don't think we've foregone it in all instances, in this case, this is an idea that was brought from teachers and supported by teachers, put together by the coach, and they've asked to move forward. And it's also one of those things that we have consistent programming K to 8, as opposed to having various programs and models for kids with another transition between the buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Julio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Ms. Timmons? You're on mute?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
All right, thank you. So the final proposal we have this evening is the recommendation to implement the proposed Elementary Report Card for the 2021 school year. So this was something, this was something that they've had a task force working on for quite some time, had a lot of support, we had several teachers in the Zoom attendance and talking to us and presenting this information to us. And actually, I'm going to let Dr. McKinney, because this has kind of been a big project for him, talk about it before we pitch it, because I really do think it's going to make things a lot easier going forward for both parents and students.
Just to be clear, did you make a motion?
You know what, I don't know if I said that right, I'm sorry, I will go back and make a motion before we speak to it. So I move that we recommend, I move that we implement the proposed Elementary Report Card for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Timmons, does anyone have any questions? Comments? Hearing no questions or comments, I think that Mr. Guarino can go ahead and take the roll.
All right, that's awesome, because I think you're going to love it.
Okay, on the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Julio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
We have seven yeses and two nos, the motion carries.
Okay.
All right, nothing more from our committee at this time.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Brown, do you know off the top of your head when your next meeting is?
Um, next month?
Okay.
No, I do not, I apologize.
That's all right, it is on our website, if you go to national.edu, and then under Board of Education, Calendars and Agendas. Okay, Committee on Human Resources, Ms. Timmons, do you think you have time to get started?
Well, I have 7 minutes, so I think I can get through this in 7 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to suspend the rules, because we met earlier today.
Second.
There you go, thank you. Roll call.
Okay, on the motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Julio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? I think she voted yes. Can't see her. Ms. Timmons?
Um, we just lost her.
Oh.
She thought she could do it, and it looks like she got kicked off after all.
Oh, okay. Well, the motion carries eight to zero.
All right, great. So, she asked me to take over in case that happened.
Okay.
So, the next item would be, I move to approve the personnel recommendations from the HR Committee dated today, June 17th, 2020.
I will second.
Put it out there, Ms. Julio, that's totally acceptable. All right. Any discussion? I don't see any, my dogs are very loud, I apologize, Mr. Guarino, could you call the roll?
Okay, on the motion to approve the personnel recommendations, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Julio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, the next item is, we have two administrative recommendations. The first is to approve Mr. Forrest as Principal of Broad Street School at a salary of $112,106.
I will second. Ms. O'Gara, it looks like she had her hand up to, about the salary.
Ms. O'Gara, you're on mute, so I can't hear you.
Um, so, it's Step 112, $106,000.
Oh, okay, all right, 106, thank you. Mr. Forrest indicated he thought that was wrong earlier.
He did, he was right, it was a combination of the two.
Okay, so, let me restate the motion. The motion is to approve Mr. Forrest, Principal at Broad Street, and I'm just going to say, at a salary of $106,000 a year.
I will second.
Okay, and it looks like Ms. Johnson has a comment or question.
Yes, could you, somebody let me know what his qualifications are? Where'd he come from, I don't have the papers or anything, I have a print-up problem.
Oh, okay, so, I know off the top of my head that Mr. Forrest has been the Assistant Principal at Broad Street for the last several years.
And New Searls.
And New Searls, because they were split half and half, where he was split between the two behavioral programs. And then, if I'm not mistaken, he has like 10 years' experience elsewhere.
Yes, he has, to be on Step 112, you have to have 12 years.
Okay.
We covered this at the, this was part of the HR process, when we talked about this, as he comes in, hears his thoughts, people could ask him these types of questions. When it comes to the full board, we're not, you know, vetting him publicly like this.
Wait a second, I've got to say, I'm not vetting him, I just asked a simple question, and I have a right as a board member to ask that question, I couldn't get to HR earlier, I had plans, and I did not have the papers to see it. So all I asked was a simple question. I have no problems with him, it's a simple question, thank you very much.
I would like to, I would like to say that, that I believe his resume was sent to all the board members, because I did get to look at his resume before the meeting also, so you may have it, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
You may have his qualifications in the packet that was sent out.
I didn't get a chance today, I've been working today all day.
I just wanted to, I just want to state that, because we did have a chance to look at them before the meeting.
All right, thank you very much, but I just, I just asked a simple little question, that's all I needed, was just a simple answer, thank you, Mr. Guarino, I appreciate your help.
Okay, all right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Guarino, why don't you go ahead and call the roll?
Okay, on the motion to approve Mr. Forrest, the Principal at Broad Street, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Julio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, and I have one last administrative recommendation, and that is, I move to approve Ms. Kaufman as the Assistant Principal at New Searl School at an annual salary of $81,000 a year. Dana's nodding, I got that one right.
I will second.
Seconded, okay, by Mr. Guarino. Any questions or comments regarding Ms. Kaufman? Same question, Ms. Johnson?
No, I'm not going to ask the question, it was probably in my packet, and I didn't get a chance to read it, I'm all set, thank you, I just unmuted myself so I can vote, thank you.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay, thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Julio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, I don't know off the top of my head when the next committee on human resources it is, but it is on our website. Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Mosley.
Just to the public and the board, just, we may have special BOEs for hires, new hires coming in during the summertime. That's typical, typical of our, our hiring schedule. So, you know, to your point, Ms. Raymond, that it might not be on the schedule, but we might have a special BOE just to get people approved.
But typically, Ms. O'Gara is pretty good about giving us at least a few days' notice. That's been my experience for the past few years, that we know before the day of, so. And usually we have, what, two in July and two in August-ish, sometimes more.
Ms. Kinsella is going to tell you when the next one is.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kinsella.
That's okay, we already built one in for June 29.
All right, June 29, I will see everybody there. So, great, so welcome to our new hires. All right, liaison reports. Ms. Gilio, you already gave us a little update on the reopening task force. Are there any other liaison reports for this evening? Hearing none. Unfinished business. The New Hampshire Department of Education General Assurances. Here's how this works. Everybody got in their packet, and then I gave you guys a lecture about reading it, and then I mentioned it multiple times. So, we need to have a rule stating that everyone has read their general assurances document, like 14 pages long, that was emailed to you. So, on the question of whether or not you have read your general assurances document, Mr. Guarino, please call the roll.
Mr. Guarino has read them, yes. Ms. Johnson?
I've read them, yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
I have, yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
I've read them.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Timmons?
Ms. Timmons is not here. Not here.
But she has read them.
Yes, I'm aware of that too, but I'm not sure if we have to have her say that on the record. So I will find out, but in the meantime, I would like a motion to approve me signing the general assurances document once Ms. Timmons affirms that she has read the general assurances.
So moved.
Okay, and seconded by Ms. Gilio. Okay, on that motion?
Okay, on the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, great, so as soon as Ms. Timmons lets me know that she has read them, I will meet up with Ms. Kinsella and get that signed. And then we can submit it to the state, and hopefully we won't have any holdups as far as disbursement of the grants and the funds that are tied to that document. All right, the next item under unfinished business is the summer lunch program for kids. I just asked that we revisit this again so that everyone could see the flyer and if anybody had any additional information about where our students are and their families are able to access food this summer. Anybody have anything to say on that? I'm just pulling it up, and I will ask to share my screen so that at least we can get it up there. I just have to forward through the entire general assurances, which was in our packet. Hey. Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Kinsella. So as you can see, even though it's kind of small, many of our elementary schools are still offering meals to be distributed outside the elementary school. This is frequently updated. It's typically on the Boys and Girls website, it's on our website, it's on the Soup Kitchen and Shelter website, it's on the YMCA's website, and it is usually on the website of the United Way as well. And posted throughout the city on any bulletin boards that are still open. Did anybody have any questions or comments or anything that they wanted to add? If so, shout it out.
Ms. Raymond, I had a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. So my first question is, I think it's a fantastic program, I'm glad we're continuing it through the summer. I'm in favor of it. Is this provided by the local food pantries, or is this something we do through the district funding-wise?
So this is not funded by the district. This is something that is done as a cooperative through End 68 Hours of Hunger, who we've been partnering with delivering the lunches and breakfasts along with the 68 Hours Weekend food supplies. The Soup Kitchen, Southern New Hampshire Services, I forget everybody, the YMCA, the United Way, Nashua Powell. There are a number of agencies that support this. If people wanted to donate, End 68 Hours of Hunger accepts donations. They have like a big storage shed outside of their facility off of 101A. And then also, the Soup Kitchen and Shelter accepts monetary donations, as does the United Way, on their websites.
Thank you, it looks like Mr. Donovan had something to add.
Okay, good, go ahead, Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, just, just to be totally accurate here, due to the COVID, it is, the, the school district is supplying some of this food this year. Fairly recently, the federal grants have changed. So we will be, we meaning seven or eight people in our food service that will work the summer. They actually started today through August 26, I believe. And, and they'll be providing food at Penachep, New Searl, Sunset, Broad, and the bus routes. They're going from four bus routes down to two, making them longer. And the other locations, people can still go to the schools and some other non-school locations listed on the flyer that is up here. That food will be provided mainly by Southern New Hampshire Services, but also 68 Hours of Hunger on a weekly basis, and all the other food providers within the city. So it's, it's, it's truly a, a group effort by seven or eight different people within the district. But we're a little bit more involved than we usually are, because we could get the grant money. So the funding for this should be covered by the summer grant, and it should cover our costs.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan, that's very exciting, I didn't realize that. And a huge thank you to the food service individuals who are willing to be at location and also take those long bus rides to hand out meals. That's a big time commitment, and I am truly appreciative. So this is one of my favorite summer charities. Okay, and that is all that I have. I do have a short, non-public for contract negotiations. Was there anything else that I was missing? I don't see any hands or hear anybody. So with that, I would be interested in entertaining a motion to go into non-public for contract negotiations, which is RSA 91832E.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay.
Ms. Raymond, I'm sorry to interrupt, there's also just legal matter that just has to be discussed too. So I didn't want to make people know exactly why we're going.
That's for a contract as well, correct?
Yeah, let's go.
No, okay, and for a legal, I'm sorry, Dr. Mosley, which RSA?
I don't have the RSA in front of me, Ms. Raymond, I apologize.
Okay.
There's a personnel matter.
We'll call that. That would be.
Now, it's also RSA 91832E for litigation, negotiation pending claims of, or litigation which has been threatened or writing or filed against the body or agency or in any subdivision thereof, or against any member thereof. Would that cover that?
Yeah, I, I think it's still E, yes. Okay, so I don't believe that we have any motions to make in public after our foray into non-public. So we won't be coming back together as a group.
Dan, Dan, could you please stay back for the non-public? Dana, stay back for the non-public, please.
Okay, so we will.
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes, Ms. Zim.
How will we handle sealing the minutes?
So we, I'm sorry, we will go into public very briefly at the end to
Just for that, okay.
To vote on whether or not we want to seal the minutes, yes.
Thank you.
And then to adjourn. But we don't need Mr. Norris and Mr. Gao to hang around indefinitely while we vote on whether or not to seal.
Or the cameraman, right? The camera can leave, but, no, they can't because of Zoom, okay, sorry.
Yes, the cameraman can leave or at least go in the waiting room, as can Ms. Kinsella. Okay, on the motion to go into non-public under RSA 91832E.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Can I, I'm sorry, this is out of order, and I apologize, but I failed to consider board comments. Did any board members have their hearts set on making comments this evening before we go into non-public? I'm not seeing anybody say yes. Okay, thank you, continue, Mr. Guarino.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
All right, great, so we are entering into a non-public session at 8:10 PM, hopefully briefly. So have a good evening, everybody else, and enjoy your summer break, guys.